We'll start the business meeting for Wednesday, September 23, 2020. Free Stanford Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
To the United States of America. To the states of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God.
In this is the room. Liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Who can you on there please? Councilman, how are you? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fringey.
President.
Councilwoman Rastanetti.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley.
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilman Strong.
Present.
President Scanlon.
Present.
It's all seven here.
Okay. Now, the approval of minutes from September 9, 2020, business meeting is September 14, 2020, special business meeting. Councilman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask council for unanimous approval of the minutes from the September 20 business meeting and the September 14, 2020 special.
All in favor?
Second.
Jessica, could everybody stop speaking themselves? Thank you. Just so there's not a lot of background noise.
Raise your hand if you're in favor. Anybody against? All right, thank you. That's all right, no problem. We have to set a public hearing. I'd like Grace to read that. Go ahead, Grace, please.
City Council will hold a public hearing regarding RL 20-187, which is a proposed amendment to the 2018 bond ordinance to account for an increase in the cost of the improvements to Conklin and Felden Street bridges. If you would like to comment on this, the number to call is 772-7101. Again, it's 772-7101.
So we have the public comments section. Please be respectful. You have five minutes to speak.
This is for the bond. We're doing the bond.
Oh, the bond. I'm sorry. We're doing the, this is for the public hearing, for the bond, okay.
So Grace, if you would announce the number for people to speak at the public hearing on the bond, that would be appropriate. Thank you. And please announce it twice.
Okay. The number again is 772-7101. Again, it's 772-7101.
Grace, did we receive any electronic comments to the clerk's office on the hearing?
Not on the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
I think we'll move to the public hearing section, the public comment section now. So we'll close that.
We'll take a motion. President, let's take a motion to close the public hearing on the amendment to the bond.
I'll take a motion to.
Mr. President. Mr. President, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the amendment of the bond.
Second.
All in favor?
Is it a voicemail?
I think so.
Hi.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing on the bond ordinance. We have the public comment section of the meeting. You have five minutes. Grace will announce the phone number. Please be respectful.
The number to call in for the public comment portion is 772-7101. Again, it's 772-7101. Hi, you're here for a public comment? Okay, I'm going to put you on speaker. Please.
Hello, can everyone hear me? Yes. Hi, my name is Tina Cronopoulos, and I live in the Piares District. I'd like to address the city council on a number of issues. At the special business meeting on the 14th of September and during previous meetings, several members of the city council kept tying themselves to the knot, trying to show that SROs fulfill a role that cannot be played by, say, mental health practitioners or social workers. I'm talking, of course, about the resolution that you passed last week at a special meeting to renew the contract between the city school district and the city police. In other words, the public is being sold a false bill of goods in the sense that we are being told that SROs play a special role, but that they're not really engaged in police work when they operate as school resource officers. However, let me cite the first five goals and objectives of the SROs from the memorandum of understanding between the school district and the Binghamton Police Department. One, to foster educational programs and activities that will increase student knowledge of and respect for the law and the function of law enforcement agencies. Why are you not privileging knowledge of and respect for the work of teachers, healthcare workers, postal workers, or those who run our public transportation? Two, report serious crimes that occur on campus and cooperate with the law enforcement officials in the investigation of crimes that occur at school. This is police work. Three, cooperate with law enforcement officials in the investigations of criminal offenses which occur off-campus. This is police work. Four, provide law enforcement and police services to the school, school grounds, and areas adjacent to the school. Investigate allegations of criminal incidents per police department policies and procedures. Enforce state and local laws and ordinances. This is police work. Five, work to prevent juvenile delinquency through close contact and positive relationships with students. The SRO shall conduct security inspections as permitted by law to deter criminal or delinquent activities. This second sentence refers to police work. Please give us all a break and stop pretending that SROs are not always doing police work in the background, even if they are, according to some of you, beloved by the students. No amount of training will erase the fact that SROs are police officers. And in case you're not aware, the police is a racist institution, regardless of whether or not one of its employees is a good person. I'd like to know several things. One, why do some members of the city council feel comfortable with criminalizing our children? Two, why is there not a single goal or objective in this memorandum of understanding that focuses on the well-being of our children? Three, why do members of the city council continue to ignore research which demonstrates that the presence of SROs in schools almost always leads to increased criminalization of children and does not prevent school shootings? Four, why is it so hard to hire more school psychologists than mental health practitioners instead of SROs, when you keep insisting that the job of SROs is to enable the well-being of children, which SROs are not trained for? Five, when will the white people in the room finally start listening to children and families of color when they say that police officers pose a threat to them? The only people who keep insisting that police in schools are a good thing are white people. Let me zoom in on one aspect of the above in particular. One council member especially kept talking about how all they were doing was listening to the experts, aka the principal of the high school and the superintendent of the school district. I'm not sure that either of these two people are experts in the research that is concerned with studying the effect of the presence of police officers in schools on children. If they were experts, then they would have surely told you that white students are more often sent to the principal's office for objective infractions, and that black students are more often sent to the principal's office for subjective infractions. If you were really interested in the opinions of the experts, you would have contacted academic researchers, or you would have perhaps done the work yourself. Again, give me a break. Two more things. How can the public possibly participate in these meetings in a meaningful way when the agenda and supporting documents usually are made only available 24 hours before any given meeting?
You have one minute left.
How is working or taking care of children or other family members supposed to find the time to look into this stuff? No wonder that only very few folks make comments on a regular basis. It's almost as if the system were designed to make it so that we don't participate, and that you then get charged to do whatever seems best for you and your political careers, as opposed to what's good for the community. Finally, I am appalled at the way the mayor recently implied that two council members are standing in the way of police officers being supplied with bulletproof vests. If I'm not wrong, the non-binding resolution to honor Libarta included all forms of political propaganda that has nothing to do whatsoever with honoring this police officer's life. In case you were not aware, the budget of the Binghamton Police Department currently stands at 20% of the total six budget, up from 5% in the 1970s. Are you really suggesting that police officers in Binghamton don't already have access to bulletproof vests? Do you really want the public to believe that a police force that has access to snipers, military-grade vehicles?
Your time is up.
Doesn't have access to bulletproof vests?
Thank you. Thank you for calling. Thank you.
Again, we should start with the law and order stuff and get real. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak during the public comment section, please call 772-7101. Again, the number is 772-7101.
Grace, this is Sharon. If you can ask if they're a Binghamton resident before you put them in, that would be great.
Okay.
Thank you. I don't think there's any question as to the last caller's residency.
No.
President Scanlon, I believe Councilwoman Friedman is requesting to be recognized.
Yes, Councilwoman Friedman, go ahead.
Thank you. I was wondering if we could read, if there's no more callers, if we could read a letter that we received at the last business meeting or prior to the last business meeting from a constituent that wanted their comment to be read into the record, and for some reason it was overlooked?
That's in the, that's in the last to be read.
I have a letter.
Yes. Grace, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, I will start reading it. Okay, this letter is from Martin Dory. His address is 50 East Clapman Street. His letter states, "This letter is intended to be both read aloud, both read aloud at the general meeting session of the Binghamton City Council and entered into the record. I have two broad concerns that I would like to address. They are related. First, on a recent visit to Columbus Park, I looked over the recent mosaic artwork on the wall. It's very nice work, although I do have concerns about one particular aspect of the mosaic. I have enclosed a picture for your reference. This is a picture of the artist's signature, as it were. The mosaic was done as a city youth summer employment project under the direction of Emily Jablon, who took the liberty of naming her charges with the term "Mosaic Mafia." This term, in the 21st century, is offensive on its face. It is more so offensive in a park that is dedicated to Christopher Columbus in honor of the many Italian-American immigrants who once lived in the surrounding area and throughout the city. That is point one. Point two is that this must be corrected by the city at its own expense as allowed and improved the design related, sorry, improved the design. Related is the fact that many find the name Columbus to be offensive, given the historical record that he participated in the Spanish slave trade in the Caribbean and mistreated and abused Native Americans in the islands. Some go so far as to accuse him not without some merit of participating in the genocide of indigenous peoples. For this reason, it has been discussed widely in this community that the name of the park must, should be changed. While some have suggested Sada Shakira Park as a name, I personally do not believe that this name would be appropriate, as she has no direct connection to Binghamton. The same could be argued for Christopher Columbus. To put an idea up for consideration, I believe the park's name should be changed. I see at least two options that are worthy of debate. The first is in keeping with the original intent to honor the city and neighborhood's Italian heritage, would be to name the park Italia, the Latin name for Italy. It would honor the original intent without honoring Columbus, whom, by the way, did not discover America, but only the island of Hispaniola and others to the south of the main North American continent and the United States. The other suggestion in keeping with the intent of honoring the demographics of a large majority of the people currently living in the park's neighborhood with a name relating to African-American heritage, here are two names come to mind. The first is Leah Webb Park, after the city's first African-American council member. The second is Gentleman Joe Taylor Park, after a resident of the neighborhood who was both a noted professional boxer and later a businessman in the neighborhood. Both names or others related to the city more directly might be appropriate. My second concern involves the city's responsiveness to its citizens. On August 1, and repeated on August 11, I sent an email to Clerk Leighton Rogers and indirectly to the entire city administration and council, expressing some of my concerns about the maturity and appropriateness of actions of Emily Jablon, who has drawn some community related to her work in the park and her connection with Columbus's name controversy. In retaliation, Emily Jablon has not been appropriate nor professional, and in fact, threatened one of her critics with calling the child abuse hotline on them, when in fact she noted there is no cause for concern. Additionally, Emily's public postings on Facebook also show her driving her employees around, including to a park, which I believe is in Pennsylvania. While intent might be harmless, the fact that a private citizen under contract to the city is doing either of these things is alarming. The city is not indemnified for such activities, and there is no proof of permission from parents and releases the city from liability, or even allows their children to participate in such non-work-related activities. This letter addressed to two other entities was ignored. The most I got was an out-of-office acknowledgement. One of the other agencies responded after a prompt that they had no jurisdiction. It is unacceptable for the city or its employees to ignore citizens' inquiries, especially concerning potentially serious issues. It should not be tolerated, and action should be taken to address not only my personal matter, but others as well.
Grace, if you would announce that call number for public comment again?
Yes.
And then we can proceed to reading any other electronic submissions into the record.
That's the only letter we received. The number again is 772-7101. Again, it's 772-7101. Councilwoman Friedman, this is Sharon. Was that the letter that you were referring to?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to the preferred agenda. We'll close the portion of the public comment section. Would anyone like anything removed for the preferred agenda? See, no one?
I have a question.
Yes.
If everything stays on the preferred agenda, we can make comments about specific pieces of legislation. Is that correct?
Yes, we still can, yes.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
This is Sharon. Just because the preferred agenda was not created, but adopted by the previous council, the purpose of the preferred agenda is actually to have more discussion on each individual item, instead of spending the time to read letter by letter the entire piece of legislation, which is what council used to do. So council members should absolutely take the opportunity to discuss each item that is read aloud by the clerk, because that is the purpose of the preferred agenda, which is to enable more constructive time for discourse, as opposed to waste of time by reading and things letter by letter in the resolution.
So if you want to comment on anything in this preferred agenda, go ahead. I'll have Grace read these, and we can stop at any point, whatever comment you want to make. You're certainly allowed to make it, okay?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. The first one is introductory ordinance 20-84, considered in finance. An ordinance to amend the 2020 finance budget to amend assistant purchasing agent to purchasing agent.
Comments? Okay, Grace, move on.
Okay. Second one is introductory ordinance 20-85, considered in finance. An ordinance to refund bond ordinance of the city of Binghamton, New York, adopted September 23, 2020, authorizing refunding of all or a portion of certain outstanding bonds of said city, stating the plan of refunding appropriating an amount not to exceed 8.2 million for such purpose, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed 8.2 million, refunding bonds to finance set appropriations and making certain other determinations relative thereto.
Comments? Go ahead, Grace.
Introductory ordinance 20-86, considered in finance. An ordinance to amend bond ordinance of the city of Binghamton, New York, adopted September 23, 2020, amending the bond ordinance adopted February 21, 2018, on account of increase in the cost of improvements to Conklin and Feldon Bridges.
This is Sharon. I apologize, Aviva. I just wanted to make clear that one of the reasons why this does not get subject to seeker again is because it is the same scope of work. But just so council is clear, this is the type-two action. So because it's the same scope of work, just an increased cost, there's no difference in environmental impact. Therefore, this council's previous seeker determination stays.
Thank you, counselor. Go, Grace.
Mr. President, may I make a quick comment on this?
Sure.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to say that this is a discussion that has come up before, when we were talking about taking out new bonds or increasing bonds. And I do just want to say that it was not lost on me that this is a tenuous time financially, but I do believe that this, you know, infrastructure projects are important for the functioning of our city. So, you know, in voting for this, I don't want to make it seem like, oh, we're just spending money, but this was carefully considered. And, you know, even though we have an interesting financial situation due to COVID, I do think it's important to follow through on infrastructure projects. That's just what I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anybody else like to comment? Go ahead, Grace, move on.
Introductory ordinance 20-87, considered in finance. An ordinance to amend the 2020 budget to increase revenue line insurance recovery and expense line professional services to pay for the demolition of 12 Gaylord.
Comments on this?
Introductory ordinance 20-88, considered in finance. An ordinance to amend the 2020 sewer budget to fund additional admin fees for refinance of EFC notes.
Comments? Move on, Grace, please.
Okay. Introductory ordinance 20-89, considered in finance. An ordinance to amend the permanent ordinance 20-46 to correct two expense budget lines by $500.
Keep going, Grace, please.
Introductory resolution 20-95, considered in public works and parks. A resolution requiring the intent of the city of Binghamton, City Council to act as lead agency, city of Binghamton Sixth Ward Interceptor Sewer Replacement Project.
See, nobody agrees. Go ahead.
Introductory resolution 20-96, considered in finance. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Broom County Urban League for use of FY45 funds in an amount not to exceed $8,760 for the SUNY Attained Computer Lab at 47 North Street. And then introductory resolution 20-97, considered in finance. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the YWCA of Binghamton and Broom County for use of FY46 CDP funds in an amount not to exceed $15,000 for the Young Wonders Early Learning and Youth Development Program.
Comments? All right.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to accept the preferred agenda.
I apologize to interrupt. I see that Councilwoman Friedman seeks.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Am I unmuted? Yes, okay. Thank you. This is something that I actually just noticed that in the work session packet from Monday, I don't believe that the RL for the expenses for demolishing of 12 Gaylord Street, I don't see that that's expedited. So I'm just curious why it ended up on this agenda now.
But I marked it on there as expedited. But there's a chance I did it. I don't have the work session packet in front of me.
Okay, yeah, I don't see it marked as expedited. It didn't have an asterisk on the agenda, nor do I see it marked on the actual legislation that it should be expedited.
Sharon, what do we do from here?
There is nothing that requires that the res or ordinance be expedited in order for council to hear it. However, due to the limited amount of time, council members are free to remove an item from the preferred agenda and make a motion to hold if it wanted to review it at its net, which would come with a second, which would be reviewed at the next business meeting. So that's what council members have the right to do in the event that they do not feel they have a sufficient amount of time to make a decision.
All right, Sharon, let me, go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
I think I would like to make a motion to hold it, just because I wasn't expecting it to be on the agenda. I was expecting to have the two weeks to do my due diligence in researching this, given that this is a new procedure to us, at least the freshman council members.
Let me, okay. I was going to speak on it. I was going to sit myself in the chair and speak on it, but it's already been seconded, so it's going to be held over. So, all right, let's move on.
Okay. I've read everything. So now we need to do a motion to accept this.
So, I need a motion to accept the preferred agenda, please.
So what we'll do first, I apologize, President, is, just for the record, Councilwoman Friedman would like that the 20-87 be removed from the preferred agenda.
Correct.
Okay, so, and then let's vote on the preferred agenda, and then let's codify the motion to hold in the second, okay? That way procedurally it makes sense.
Let's remove, let's vote on the preferred agenda. We're going to remove introductory resolution 20-97 from there for preferred.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. President, point of order, that RL was never removed in the beginning procedurally the way it's supposed to be from the preferred agenda, number one. So if a motion is going to be made after the fact to hold it over, that motion and second needs to occur first. And a motion would have to be made to then accept the amended preferred agenda, because it's now no longer on there.
That's correct.
The only concern that I have, yeah, the only concern that I have, just logistically, Councilwoman Friedman, is there anything in particular with regarding to the process that you're concerned about? Because I know this particular property has been an issue for quite a number of years. This is something that we've done before. Is there any level of uncertainty that you have that maybe we can answer now? Is it financial? Is it public safety? Is it logistics? Because we got a fairly in-depth discussion, we got fairly in-depth discussion points on this. I'm not saying your uncertainty isn't mandated. I'm just saying, is it something that we could maybe answer now?
Let me, let me, myself in the president's chair, speak on this, please. So I'm going to speak as a councilman now. Chair, did I do that correctly?
Yes, typically if we are all at the dais, you would move to a council member's seat, and the council member who is pro tem would fill your seat. But since we're proceeding in a remote capacity, I believe you can speak from the chair that you are in, as any other council member who is proceeding remotely can. And Councilmember Rastanetti, you are the pro tem, correct?
Yes.
Thank you for reminding me. So for this purpose, we will presume that, or see that Sophia Rastanetti is the acting pro tem, and President Scanlon is speaking as a council member for his district. Go ahead. Councilmember Scanlon, yes?
We still have a motion that was approved and seconded to hold the legislation over. So is that voided?
So what I was trying to explain. So, so what I was trying to explain is because we were voting on the preferred agenda procedurally, that item, which is 2087, needs to be removed from the preferred agenda so that a motion, so that a vote on the preferred agenda can happen. Because it's been removed, then we go on to that 2087 as first read legislation, which is is, which would then be subject to any motion to hold. So does that answer your question, Councilwoman Riley?
Well, it does. However, it's already been done. So does it need to be rescinded? Because it was.
We're going to do it. We're going to have to do it again because that's what I was saying before is procedurally that happened after the fact, and therefore we needed to remove it from the preferred agenda, vote on the amended preferred agenda, and then consider the legislation as first read, and then codify the motion in the second, if that makes sense. Okay. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Riley?
Yes, it does.
Okay. And I apologize for the confusion. I understand Councilwoman Friedman as, Friedman as well, because we did it at the very end of the preferred agenda. So however, because it was on the preferred agenda, if, if you wish to have discussion now, you can. But my suggestion would be to go ahead, move it, amend the preferred agenda, vote on that, and then move on to discussion. But at this point, President Scanlon is now Councilmember Scanlon, Sophia Resinetti is now the acting pro tem, and we can go ahead and have discussion on it.
All right. So I've been at City Council for four years, and this is a house, this woman called me three years ago. It's in my district, obviously. It's a gentleman who lives on the west side, and the house has fallen on itself with a point where this didn't happen yesterday. It's been falling down. And she's trying to sell her property, and obviously she can't sell it with this house next door because it looks awful. So I've been working on this for three years, and finally it's come to fruition. So I'm just telling you that this, the story behind this house, I'm not sure why it would be held over. I don't understand why it would be held over, but that's certainly a council person's bragging to hold it over. But I'm not sure what the, because it was on a, not on the preferred agenda, I'm not sure if there's a reason to hold it over. But, and that's all I got to say about the place. That's all. Thank you.
Councilwoman Friedman wishes to be recognized, and we'll pretend that you switched chairs.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, Sharon, so correctly, I still, let's, we're going to, we're going to vote on the preferred agenda, and they'll take it. I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Friedman is still waiting to be recognized.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Thank you. And I'm happy to save my comment until the end if it would be more appropriate. But I've been, I've been asked twice what my reasoning is. So I'm happy to give it now, or I'm happy to give it after we solidify the preferred agenda.
Go, go ahead, Councilmember Friedman.
Okay, thank you. So, I want to be clear that I have nothing against taking down, demolishing a blighted property. I understand it's a safety issue, and I, I understand that President Scanlon, you've been working on this for a long time, and I appreciate your diligence in following through this. My, my qualm is that we, so for us, for the freshman council members, this is the first time, I believe, that we've had legislation like this asking for city funding for, for demolishing a, a property, if I'm correct. And Councilwoman Riley asked for further information about how properties are selected and what, like, what is the bidding process or what's going on. And the court counsel, Ken Frank, sent us that information yesterday. And in preparing for this meeting, not anticipating that this would be on the agenda, I did not have time to review that information. So that's, I, I don't feel like we were given the, the proper amount of time to be educated about this procedure that's new to us. Again, not expecting that this would be on the preferred agenda, or rather, not expecting that this would be expedited for today. So that's the reason why I'm just requesting that extra time to get educated on this information that was provided to us yesterday. That's, that's the reason for the holdover. Not that, you know, I, I don't agree that the house should, should come down. It sounds like this is, and I actually looked it up on the internet on the street, like Google Street View, and it does look like it's in disrepair. And so I do think it's important to take it down. But I just would feel more comfortable if I could get time to review the information that was provided to us. So, thank you.
Councilmember Friedman, can you state for the record that you would like 2087 to be removed from the preferred agenda?
Do I have to make a motion for that?
No, you just have to state that you would like it to be removed.
Okay, I would like to have introductory ordinance 2087 removed from the preferred agenda.
And now.
I need a second. Councilwoman Byrne seconded that, okay?
So, so just as a point of order, because the preferred agenda envisions a unanimous vote, I know it's been a while since we've done this already, but removal of an item from the preferred agenda does not require a second. All that it requires is one person to say, I, you know, I want to take this off. Okay? And so now there's an amended preferred agenda, and now, President, you may take a motion on a vote on the amended preferred agenda.
I'll take a motion on the preferred agenda. We're going to remove introductory ordinance 20-87.
So I'm moved.
You know, Mr. President, Mr. President, point of order. And, you know, I'm not a lawyer here, but I know Roberts rules very well. You know, when, when, when we start to impend on process and chamber rules, the issue here becomes that you end up setting a precedent for something that's wrong for later on. The process of the preferred agenda is that if a council member wishes to remove a piece of legislation from the preferred agenda, it is supposed to occur before the preferred agenda is, began to be discussed. On a technicality, I have a motion on the floor that was made before any request for a removal and any motion to hold anything over, which was to accept the preferred agenda. So if we're following procedure, we are absolutely not doing that.
I did not hear your, I did not hear your motion, Gio. So I apologize.
I, I, that's okay. I, I made a motion to prefer the, to accept the preferred agenda after President Scanlon asked if there was any comment on the last RL that was read into the record. So I did that before all of this. So just for, just for everyone's understanding, okay, if we have items on the preferred agenda, and you want to remove something, you have to do that before the preferred agenda process starts. That's why council president asks before it started, are there any members of council who wish to remove something from the preferred agenda? So that way it goes on the non-preferred agenda, and then it is isolated on its own. So we're not even following our own rules here. And I hate to be a stickler about that, but I've got a very big problem with that because it sets precedent for later for incorrect things. So, understanding that process, it would be my summation, and Counselor, obviously you would have the ultimate say on this, but it would seem to me that following the process, that is part of our chamber rules, a motion to remove something from the preferred agenda after the preferred agenda has been completed in its entirety would actually not be something recognizable because it has occurred outside of when that is supposed to occur in the process.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Skorinji, and I would, I would agree with you. Thank you for that clarification.
Sharon, are you there? Hello, Sharon? Oh. Well, we need the, we need the attorney. She's gone.
Oh, I apologize. I was muted. And I was apologizing also to Councilwoman Skorinji because I did not hear a motion to accept the preferred agenda. And I think part of that is related to the remote proceeding. So I apologize.
And Sharon, no, and Sharon, I completely recognize that maybe my phone cut out or something. That's, and, and also in the original comment that I had made, besides the procedural aspect, Councilwoman Friedman's request to get more information on that is important. And that was why I had also prefaced by saying, was there anything which I, I appreciate that she articulated that point that she said that she was, that she wanted more information about? If I can elaborate on that, if memory serves me correctly, at that last, at our last meeting, our business meeting, that question was raised, which is a good question. And if memory serves me correct, that question was answered. The answer to that question is how do these things work broadly versus how are individual properties selected? That's a, that answer is two parts. A, as court counsel Ken Frank articulated, it's very individualistic, and it's individualistic for the following reasons: public safety and allocation of resources and money, as well as any potential code violations or anything related to that. And number two, in this particular situation, because of the public safety factor that I believe it was actually mentioned at the last business meeting, that the roof is collapsing in onto itself, we're in a public safety issue for the homeowners that live in that immediate area. I would hate for this thing to be postponed, and four days from now, that home collapses onto itself, and there are two 10-year-olds walking home from school on the sidewalk and get hit by falling rough off of the roof because we didn't get in there as quickly as possible. In terms of money recuperation, which was also a very good question that was raised by my colleagues at the business meeting, that question was answered as well. Due to the level of public safety impact factors being so negative with this particular property, that public safety overrides the concern for a logistical process of code and getting out bids, even though court counsel already mentioned that that was done, and the city moves forward, pays for the demolition, and then sues the homeowner and their home insurance to get the money back. I can speak very articulately to a property that was tied up in the state Supreme Court for four and a half years before we were able to get our hands on it and was the result of an arson fire. So, you know, when it comes to public safety issues like this, not to mention the fact, if anybody gets into the property, if a fire is started, that's going to cost fire resources, code resources, police resources, first responders potentially. The, the domino effect here is, is, is elusive, to say the least. So I think we're in a position here because court counsel, fire marshal, and everyone legally and public safety wise involved has deemed that the level of this property is that harsh, that it needs to come down, we're working on behalf of our constituents, as well as Councilman Scanlon, who's been working on this for over three years, to get this done and get this out of the way. I think those questions are all very good questions, but it would seem to me that during the business meeting, both broadly and specifically as it relates to this particular property in this RL, those were answered, and I just wanted to reiterate those answers.
Sharon, please make a ruling on this, Sharon, so we can move on. Let's decide one way or another. It's either on the preferred agenda or off. Gio didn't make a motion to accept the preferred agenda. We all heard him. So Sharon, please make a decision on this so we can move on.
This is Sharon. I did see that Councilwoman Riley wished to be recognized. However.
Sharon, can I, can I ask you to make a decision on this so we can move on?
So, so I agree that if Gio made a motion to accept the preferred agenda, that procedurally that should have gone forward. I did not hear it. However, the purpose of the preferred agenda is to enable constructive discourse. And it appears that Councilwoman Friedman and Councilwoman Riley, but namely Councilwoman Friedman, was unfamiliar with the process of the preferred agenda, as indic, as indicated by her comment at the very beginning of the opening of the preferred agenda, which was, can we even comment or question this? Right? So because it appears that the process of the preferred agenda was not adequately explained to voting members of council, while I agree with Councilwoman, Councilwoman Skorinji procedurally, as a policy purpose, I do think that Councilwoman Friedman's wish to take this from the preferred agenda should be given consideration and recognized and assented to by this council. I cannot force them to do that. So procedurally, Councilwoman Skorinji would have to withdraw his motion to accept the preferred agenda from its original, and then we could move it again, and then we could vote on it. So that's up to Councilwoman Skorinji. I do think from the perspective of court counsel, that Councilwoman Friedman made her point with regards to a lack of understanding with regards to the preferred agenda and wanting to remove it clear. So ultimately, it's up to Councilwoman Skorinji whether or not he wishes to withdraw his motion.
Gio, Gio, quickly, do you, do you want to remove your, your motion, Gio, or no?
I'm, I'm not going to lie, Mr. President. I, I'm inclined not to, but I, I also want to be very fair, which is why I wanted to give Councilwoman Friedman an opportunity to follow up, which is why I asked that question first. Councilwoman Friedman, with the concerns that you had, did that answer any of those concerns or questions?
May I respond?
Sure.
Of course, please, please.
Okay, thanks.
Speak up, please.
I'm sorry. I missed what you said, President Scanlon.
No, no, Councilwoman Friedman, please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So I, I do just want to respond first to what Sharon said, that I do, you know, I am familiar with the, the procedure for the preferred agenda. I just wanted to double check because I forgot, given the preferred agenda, if we were able to make comments on specific pieces of legislation. And I would say, Councilwoman Skorinji, I very much appreciate the, the information that you relayed, and this is very helpful for my understanding of generally that how this procedure works. I, I would say that, you know, an argument is to be made, especially for someone who is very concerned with procedure as you have every right to be, and I actually very much appreciate that. I, I feel like the procedure of this, making it onto the agenda for this meeting is incorrect. And I will say that I apologize that I noticed that after the motion had already been made. So I, I understand that I brought up this concern out of order. So, you know, I understand if like, if procedurally, it doesn't work this way, but I, you know, I did just want to, you know, for talking about precedent, I do think it's important for us to, you know, have a precedent where we are giving, we're voting on legislation in the timeframe that we are expecting, and given the appropriate amount of time to become educated, again, like reading information. Because while the information that you provided was very helpful, I have the email open now that was sent from Ken, and there are five documents that are attached to it. And again, I didn't look at those because in preparing for this meeting, I wasn't expecting this to be on the, on the agenda for discussion. So, you know, if, if the preferred agenda has to be, you know, if we have to vote on that motion, given the fact that it was put forth, I, I understand that. And again, I apologize for noticing that. for noticing that after the fact, but I think it's two separate issues. It's like the information regarding the house, the safety issues, you know, that's one thing, and then also the, the separate issue is us being presented with legislation that we weren't expecting to and not having adequate time to read the supporting documentation. So those are my two.
Councilwoman Skorinji, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I was finished.
We done? Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Skorinji, as the President of City Council, I would ask you to please remove your motion to accept the preferred agenda so we can move on.
I'll, I'll, I'll follow that request, I'll remove the motion.
Okay. All right, so Sharon, so this, I'd say, let's start again. So I'll take a motion to accept the preferred agenda, we're gonna remove introductory ordinance 20-87.
Mr. President, point of order, that doesn't need a motion. So if we're, if we're following that now, Councilwoman Friedman requested the removal, so now it's been removed.
Okay.
She made a mo, she made a motion to hold it over, and I believe Councilwoman Riley seconded it, so...
Councilwoman Burns, go ahead, yeah.
Oh, Councilwoman Burns, I apologize. So that's off the rail. So now picking up, I will, I will make, I'll make a motion to, to accept the preferred agenda as amended.
Need a second on that, please?
I'll second that.
All favor?
That's a roll call.
That needs a roll call.
Okay, roll call, I go ahead, please.
Councilwoman Skorinji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Restonetti?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burns?
Aye.
Councilwoman Strong?
Aye.
President Scanlon?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We're going to communication with council members, I forgot where I left off last time. I thought it was with Councilwoman Strong, but I'm not sure on it. Does anybody remember where we were?
Just, this is Sharon, just for the purposes of the record, 2087 would now be first read legislation or non-preferred agenda, and the motion to hold has been, by Councilwoman Friedman, has been seconded by Councilmember Burns.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Does anybody know where we left off last time? But the bitter fact that it was Councilman Restonetti who went first, my recollection, so we'll go to Councilwoman Riley, please.
Good evening, everyone. Not much to bring up, again, recognizing our teachers, staff, and administrators from the Binghamton City School District as our students navigate through the Google Classroom, Zoom, and intermittent internet fun, I will say. So kudos to everyone for staying patient and doing what needs to be done for our children. I would like to highlight that we're approaching the end of our census period, there are about seven days. So I sent a message out recognizing our students who have moved back in town, particularly in the third district and in many of your districts as well, that if they were not, if they were not counted in the census while they were home, to go ahead and ensure that they are represented here in the city of Binghamton so that we are appropriately documenting our residents. And that concludes my message. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Now to Councilwoman Friedman, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thank you to all of my colleagues with your patience as we are learning more and more every day about how this process works, about how we can best serve our constituents. And I wanted to add on, actually, to what Councilwoman Riley just said, with something that has recently been brought to my attention regarding the census that has been causing a little bit of confusion, that even if households have already responded to the census online or by phone, if they've self-reported, they are still likely to have a census worker come to their house just to verify that information. So I've been hearing reports that people are confused, that they think to themselves, oh, wait a minute, I thought I took care of this. This is just to ensure the completeness. It's kind of like quality control. So census workers can come to each household up to six times. So again, we're trying to get the complete count. So thank you constituents for your patience with the census workers. The higher the response rate that we have, the more of a complete count that we have for our city, means more federal dollars for infrastructure projects, roads, schools, hospitals, and also more political representation that we have. So it's, if we all come together behind this, this, this effort, then it will really be rewarding for us for the next 10 years. And I think that is all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Now to Councilwoman Strong, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to briefly say I had the privilege of being at the press conference the other day for the, basically, the number of the number of projects and... So I'm excited to see that project move forward. I think it's gonna be a bright spot for, for that area on the south side and, and for the city as a whole. So just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Councilmembers, Councilmember Strong, I'm sorry, this is Sharon. You did cut out when speaking about the project, so much so that I couldn't understand what project you were talking about. So if you'd like to restate your comments, please go ahead.
Sure, I was just, I was privileged to be at the, the press conference and the beginning kickoff for the number five commons project on the south side and the demolition at 28 Mary Street of the former McCoy catering office. So I just, just, just saying that I'm excited about that project kicking off, and I think that's gonna be a bright spot for the south side and the city as a whole.
Thank you, Councilman. Now to Councilwoman Burns.
Thank you, Mr. President. The, let me take my mask off here. Over on the south side, everybody's aware that the Discovery Center is up there, and there's a good possibility that the Discovery Center will close where it currently is and combine with Roberson Memorial or Roberson on the, on the west side. Now, there are two things about that. There's a board of directors on the Discovery Center, and then there is a fundraising committee. These two, these two committees are in disagreement about closing this, the Discovery Center. I do not want to see it closed. If they combine with Roberson, then they will move it over to, over, over to that, over to the west side. And the other part of it is that the Story Garden, the playground, which is a community gem and is a treasure, my grandkids call it the beautiful park, because I used to say, oh, isn't it a beautiful park? This is such a beautiful park. And so where are we gonna go today? They said, let's go to the beautiful park. So they, they absolutely love it. And I don't know anybody's children or grandchildren that don't love this park. So I've heard, I've heard, I know that Phil from the zoo was talking about if they did move out, that he would take the building and take over the Story Garden Playground. But if anybody wants to get involved with this, you can email me at jburnstocityofbinghampton.com and I'll give you all the information I have. It gets, it's quite complicated, actually, but the south side does not want to lose the Discovery Center, the community doesn't want to lose the Discovery Center, and we do not want to lose the Story Garden Playground. So that's it from me, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Now to Councilwoman Skorinji.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to thank the DPW and all of our contract agencies, the mayor's office for the continued investments in the first district with Gaines Street up for milling and paving. Again, want to thank Bernice St. Clair, our superintendent of roads, for all the work that she's been doing. And I believe that's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Now to Councilwoman Restonetti, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, I wanted to say a big thank you, big heartfelt thank you to all the community members that showed up for the, one of the neighborhood cleanups that we like to do here in the district. It was a great turnout and we made a huge impact. Every time I, we do something like that, I'm humbled at, you know, really how much we can get done and when we all come together. And that's it, really. Thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you, council people for speaking. Thank the people who sent the letters and the, the one phone call we had. I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
We're adjourned.
Happy good night, everyone.